Hold on to me as we go. Happy birthday to the girl. And this place should be yours alone. Just know you're not alone. I'm gonna make this place your home. Settle down, it'll all be clear. Don't pay no mind to the people who fill you with fear. Your troubles they might drag you down. If you get lost, you can always be found. Just know you're not alone. I'm gonna make this place your home.
Thank you so much. I was one of them enjoying you guys. Amazing. Our next performance is gonna be a drum line from by the fifth through eighth grade students from the George Washington School Number One. I can't even, you feel out of your heart. This is my ladies. Look at those drums. Amazing. At this time, we're gonna have an original poem by Kiana Obu, an eighth grade student here at George Washington School Number One. Are you guys enjoying the performances so far? Thank you, thank you. We thank all you guys for being here this evening. We thank you for taking your time after being scheduled to be here and see the performances of our children here in the city of Elizabeth. And I think we're back. Alright, go ahead, Kiana.
When I close my eyes, I see myself, free from lies and free from cries. Free of pain, I feel so happy inside, so full of love, so full of grace. And as I think, I put a smile on my face. I erase the past and enjoy the present, and think of life as a gift from heaven.
Thank you, Kiana. Was that a verse? Can you write that, Kiana? Can you write that? Thank you. Oh, very good. You're like, "Oh, Kiana." Now we got a radio play on. I go to show our community that I was keeping tabs on the city of Elizabeth. Our next performance is gonna be the entertainer, Ice Scott Joplin. And it's gonna be performed on a piano by Jaquan Miles, an eighth grade student here at George Washington School Number One. Thank you so much, Jaquan. At this time, we're gonna take a quick break while we just break down the program, because we're gonna have three more performances. But while we take this break, I just wanted to recognize Roseville Board of Education President Donna Obi for being here. As well as Roseville Council President, Councilman Eve Obu for being here. Everyone, please. Thank you so much. Okay, not only are we recognizing the achievements of our students here in Elizabeth and celebrating multicultural month, but we are also going to be recognizing and honoring Haitian Heritage Month, if you noticed in my picture. So, at this time, I'm gonna thank everyone here who was here, came to partake in this festivity today. And we're gonna have our first performance, which is going to be a Haitian folk dance by Miss Shirley Adisa's group from School Number Twenty-Three. Miss Shirley. Okay. Isn't this Michelle's group here? Have it out for the way. Will you wait for them coming? Okay, we're ready. Miss Shirley Adisa's group from School Number Twenty-Three, Nippon Mary Jackson.
...
Thank you so much, Miss. Moving and dance is something that the Haitian culture really takes great pride in, so I'm so happy that you guys will take part of that with us today. Before we move on, I just wanna recognize past board member Michelle Alistair for being here and thank you for supporting us. We're gonna have a Haitian poem by Miss Shirley Adisa's group. And the narrator is gonna be Fritz Mann Davila.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Fritz Mann Davila, a seventh grader from Nicholas Mary Butler School Twenty-Three. Today, I will be reading a poem entitled Haiti. Haiti, our country Haiti is unique. It is where independence began for the black man. Though it is the first country of African descent to gain independence in the Western Hemisphere. Haiti is the second oldest republic in the Western Hemisphere. It has been aptly described as American by geography, French by language, and African by tradition. The country will always proud, will always proud to call home, Haiti, the pearl of the Antilles. Today, we share with you what makes Haitians so proud of their heritage and makes, and the magic that makes Haiti so unforgettable. It is a great honor for us to share with your pride and love for that right is for Haiti. We are proud Haitians and forevermore, no matter where we may be, our hearts will always be your homies. Haitians for life, I say full of it.
That's right, alright, alright. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Fritz Mann. And our last, our final performance is going to be another Haitian dance by Miss Alexandra Meekins and Michelle Serra's group from Halsey Junior Leadership Academy. That was one of my favorite songs, so thank you so much. I really appreciate it. But, um, before we close, I just wanna give a message to the community as a whole. Haiti is a strong believer that unity is strength. In a word, unity means oneness or togetherness. When there is oneness, there is likely to be more strength in opinion, more strength in action, and more strength in character. Haiti's motto, "La Lune de la Fosse," is used to signify the strength in uniting for the common good of the people. As a Haitian leader, that is exactly what I want all mankind to do, unite by committing to support and encourage others to do the same. So, thank you so much. At this time, I'll give up our present, but we'll continue on for a gentleman.
Thank you, Charlene. Thank you for your wonderful job of hosting and introducing the performances. Let me just start by saying again, thank you all for being here tonight. And I wanna apologize to my colleagues here on the board. At the beginning of the night, I was just overwhelmed by this crowd here tonight, and I forgot to introduce my colleagues on the board. Here to my right is our Vice President Elsie Espina, Art Commissioner Fernando Nasco, our Board Council Marvin Lehman, over to my left, Charlene Bathless, Commissioner Paul Pereira, Commissioner Anthony Palo, Commissioner Francisco Gonzalez, and our Grade Superintendent Pablo Munoz. I wanna take this opportunity, last month, we had a visitor from the Hillside School Board. Today, we have the President of the Roseville School Board Donna Obi. Thank you for being here, Donna. You know, as, as the energy spills out throughout our district, we couldn't be prouder of our students here in the Elizabeth School District. I was born and raised just two blocks right next to St. Patrick's High School. And Elizabeth kids, we weren't supposed, supposed to succeed, we weren't supposed to be successful. But you know what? We are, and we're now the number one urban school district in the state of New Jersey. Never, never, ever, ever let anyone tell you you can't be anything you wanna be. So, we're so proud, and that's why we take the time at these meetings to recognize and have these performances. We also take the time to recognize our students, our scholars, our athletes, and our staff, and most importantly, the parents. Because to make this district number one, it's going to take... Because to make this district, number one, it's going to take everyone. It's going to take the village, right? And one day, one day in the very near future, we're gonna be, we can take down these banners that say the number one urban school district, and we can replace them with the number one school district in America. It's my pleasure to recognize and allow Superintendent Pablo Munoz to make a very special important announcement.
Today, Newsweek, Newsweek is a national news magazine published online and in printed press, published its 2013 Best High Schools rankings, which highlights the best 2,000 public high schools in the United States of America. The high schools that are proven to be the most effective in turning out college-ready graduates. Keep in mind that there are over 22,000 public high schools in the United States of America. I'm very proud to inform you that Newsweek ranked two Elizabeth high schools as two of the best high schools in all of America. Elizabeth High School is ranked 320, and Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy is ranked 1436. Those two high schools are two of the best high schools in all of America. Please join me congratulating Elizabeth High School, Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy's leadership, team members, and especially the students for an outstanding accomplishment.
Thank you Superintendent for that great news. Like I said, it's just a start, but we're underway to becoming the number one school district in America. And we're gonna do that with all of your help. I'm gonna now call up my colleagues who come on up here, and we're going to recognize some very special people. One of our board members, Carlos Trahilo, who lives right down the street from this school could be here with us tonight. His daughter just fell down the stairs and was taken to the emergency room, so let's keep her in our thoughts and our prayers tonight. On behalf of the Elizabeth Word of Education, I would like to recognize the Elizabeth Public School students who participated in the 2013 New Jersey Special Olympics Track and Field Events, and their coaches and the volunteers who helped them train. These students trained for eight weeks in skills and stamina. This year, 14 athletes trained and 13 participated in the track and field events, with each student earning a medal. We are very proud of their excellent achievement. I'm gonna have now Vice President Elsie Espina call down the students, the coaches, and the volunteers.
Congratulations to all of these children. It's a privilege for me. I work with special needs students. And I think it's a good opportunity. We have the best team, we have an excellent football team, so we have the best special needs athletes. And we'd like to thank Justin Amosor from John Marshall School Number 20. Diogo Cunha, Twasol Nava Tour Martínez. Iliana Duran, Maristo Moro. Madali Martinez, Batil School. Jonathan Porega, Twasol Nava Tour School. Chiqui Sanchez, Juan Pablo Duarte, Los Pedulias Martí. David Solokoke, Nicholas LaCorte, Fearless Town School. Cristofer Vallejo, Bono Vega. Vanessa Vallejo, Twasol Nava Tour. Amy Melas, Edora School 12. Alexis Bendura, Maristo Moro. Gail Vicente, Nicholas LaCorte, Fearless Town. Shantel Nuttins, Ania Arguera, Ossie. Rashid Wilhams, John Marshall School. Congratulations to all of these children. They have a great family. And these two, the good things, good times, and other coaches. I would like them to call Wendy Lobe Silva, Anthony Mendez, Yorai Silva. Also, I would like to call the volunteers, because it takes special people to do this also. Sylvia Moniz, Melissa Gro, Anita DeGoe. Congratulations to all of these children, and thank you very much for your support.
Okay, our next presentation is for student excellence. This is the perfect attendance students of the George Washington School Number One. This presentation is for a group of students from each grade kindergarten through eighth grade who have made the effort to be in school every day and to take advantage of the excellent education offered in their school. We are proud of their dedication. We're now gonna call up Anthony Palo, to call up our students.
As I call your names, please come up and receive your award. So, please join me in congratulating Justin Anai Arguera Rodriguez, Danny F. Arguera, Alan Jeffrey Kajamarka, Jeremiah Jerayl Lomax Mckendo, Eduardo Martinez Hernandez, Teddy Anthony Rivera, Leasia Genaya Perot, Giovanni Alexander Vasquez Martinez, Kayla Conserio, Magdalene Brooke Ramos, Emily Torres, Franklin Javier, Belanda Agüeta, Leonardo Etun Exane, Marioris Astino, Stephanie Martins Mendolca, Leonardo Martinez, Jimmy Ramirez, Sierra Naomi Ramirez, Ufka Vasquez Martinez, Genesis Farahania, Giovanni Conserio, Brianna Jones, Eric Miranda, Elijah Ramirez, Shakira Brown, Roper Conea, Rosa Lee Jones, Ava Swarren. And that's everybody. Perfect attendance here at George Washington School Number One.
Let's give them another round of applause for perfect attendance. Thank you. Great job. Next, we want to recognize a group of students from another fine school in this neighborhood. Benjamin Franklin School Number 13, Nation One. While we're recognizing School Number 13, I think the principal name is Giliza. Giliza what? Giliza throw out. It's the source. Come on up here. We want to recognize the student ambassadors at School 13 who are called upon to assist during special events to motivate their classmates. These students are leaders and role models of their class, their grade, and their school. Up and at this Elizabeth Torres, call them all on up.
John Free Almarzou, Ashley Aradeno, Steven Nash, Michael Atencio, John Michael Acevedo, Martino Coto, Juanos Concreta, Shirley Concreta, Ingrid De Los Santos, Giovanni Dos Santos, David Conceca, Michael Atencio, Victor Guzmán, Carolina Herrera, Diana Lavara. David Marston, Irene Madosi, Pamela Willede Smith, Sandy Arlosco Juanes, Michael Ortiz, and Alecia Smith. And David Santos. I'd like to thank the Word of Education for this opportunity. I'd like to thank all the commissioners, Mr. Williams, the cabinet, for giving our students an opportunity to shine and excel. Thank you.
Next, I want to commend all of our district's wonderful educators for their dedication and diligence in providing a superior education to all of the students of Elizabeth. Tonight, we especially recognize the four teachers of the George Washington School Number One who were nominated for Union County Teacher of the Year for their outstanding efforts in educating the children at School Number One. Please join us in congratulating these teachers with the following teachers. Please come forward to be recognized. Tiffany Kazis, Ladies Labor, Ladies Labor, Allison Mendick, and Deborah Pooh. A round of applause as a part of the gossip for these names here tonight. I'd also like to take this opportunity to call up the Principal of School Number One, Chris Anthony Yobro, and Vice Principal, Kristen Alaret, and Vice Principal, Mrs. Spania. Please come on up. Next, I would like to mention that each of our schools is an educational community where each one of our team members contributes to creating the nurturing environment that fosters learning. Every day, team members welcome children and parents to a clean, well-ordered school. They provide them nutritious lunches, they keep the students safe, and they teach them what they need to know to graduate, to be prepared to attend college and to achieve a bright future. This requires nothing short of a team of dedicated individuals, including custodial and secretarial staff, security guards, bus drivers, coaches, guidance counselors, and teachers. On behalf of the Elizabeth Board of Education, I want to recognize the following team members for their tireless efforts and commitment to excellence and their dedication to the students here at George Washington School Number One. Tracy Morris Teacher. Karen Boone Assistant. Olena Breakwig Teacher. Sabrina Burnett Williams Teacher. Maria Cabrera Guidance Counselor. Kariba Cunningham Teacher. Wayne Scott DiNodio Math Coach. Natalie Fernandez Head Secretary. Lorraine Garrus Language Arts Coach. Tanyan Gilliam Teacher. Stephanie Gonzalez Secretary. Claudia Hawkins Reed Master Teacher. Rita Hay Secretary. Canetta Jackson Social Worker. Andrew Kaplan Teacher. Jasmine Lee Teacher. Amy Liebowitz Teacher. Patricia Kennedy Teacher. John Mahan Teacher. Josejo Martinez Assistant. Retenzol Mascolo Teacher. Benedicta Cosby Teacher. Mary Ohay Teacher. Letty Perry Teacher. Patricia Pasoli Teacher. Marilyn Portella Assistant. Deborah Pooh Teacher. Kate Rush Teacher. Kathy Santor Teacher. Anna Shapkow Guidance Counselor. Mark Shover Teacher. Phil Taylor Teacher. Tracy Thompson Teacher. Julie Under Teacher. Amina Benegas Teacher. Kathy Ventura Teacher. Last but not least, Lindsey Walker Teacher. At this time, I would also like to recognize some of the many team members who contribute to the excellent educational services provided here to the students at the George Washington School Number One. Bita Backfield, the cook manager, and her kitchen staff members. For always treating students to home-cooked meals and serving dishes with high nutritional value and keeping the standards set by the Alliance for Health and Generation. Congratulations, Bita, thank you. We also want to recognize our head custodian, Ken, is it Zuda? Zuda! Head Custodian and Custodial Staff. For always keeping a safe and sanitary environment and for diligent efforts in promoting and maintaining the School One recycling initiative. Thank you, Ken, so much. And last but not least, Larry Nettles, the head security guard and the security staff for always keeping us safe and in an orderly environment. He's outside, keeping us all safe. Once again, folks, we couldn't do it without all of them. They work so hard, day in and day out, and I know they never get the recognition they deserve, but this is an opportunity to make some noise and show them how much we appreciate all of them. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all for the staff of School One. Now, I want to call back up to the stage the principal of School 13. Make some noise for Alyssa Torres, come on up. Today, we're celebrating two schools here at School One. Both School One and right down the street, School 13. So, ultimately, I want to recognize the staff members and team of School 13. I have here Alyssa Torres to help me. Each member spearheads a committee program or organization. They gave up their time after school and on weekends to assist the students and their school. And they have displayed a commitment to excellence. These are the following team members of Benjamin Franklin School Number 13. Alyssa Brennan. Allison Brennan. Sarah Brown. Tara Buckta. Nancy Correlo Nuno. Chrissy Correa. Mary Ann Davies. Laura Villacal. Marty Goni. Barbara Hanley. Joseph Puerta. Jackie Maggiano. Vivian Martinez. Lacy McConkey. Vanessa Vieiras. Nicole Pepe. Michelle Pritchard. Christina Rios. Carolyn Carolyn Song-Towers. Salirelli. Romeo C. Moyes. Carla Klein. Let's give them another round of applause. Great job at School 13. I also want to take this opportunity to recognize how in School 13, many of you already recognize and know that throughout our district, all of our students wear uniforms, took 23,000 plus, and that's been a great thing for our district. But here at School 13, as all of you can tell, a lot of them get into the spirit and the pride of our school district, and they also choose to wear their own uniforms. And congratulations to all of you for being a shining example for all the students. And if some of you may have noticed, even the board members were wearing uniforms also now. Thank you. Thank you for inspiring all of us. Thank you so much. And you know why you're up here? The next presentation is for Community Excellence. And I know this is the staff at School 13 as before the staff at 1, but it's so important to recognize the people that make it important that we have participation in all our schools. It just doesn't end at 4 o'clock when the kids get out. It continues at home and in our neighborhoods. So, this award is for Community Excellence. We both respect and encourage the community of learners that includes the parents, the team members, the students, and community members. On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to recognize the parents of Benjamin School Number 13 for volunteering their time, the support of events during the school day and after the school hours. I'm going to have Martha Goni, please come up here and help us introduce the parents.
Zubiafka. Jackie Amaya Adensio. Elaine Cabell. Rosana Greta. Liliana Medina. Alisa Hombesino. Sofia Varela Porta. Margaret Nalinde. Jessica Lopez. Liliana Pacheco. Siam Cagan. And that was 3.
Let's give them all another round of applause, the parents and the staff of School 13. Good, thank you. How about another round of applause for our teachers, parents. Great job, thank you very much. The last presentations we have tonight are the awards earned for the very elaborate, well-orchestrated displays that appeared in the Excellence Parade. The students, parents, and team members proudly marching behind their school's banner was an inspiring sight. But then to add in meticulously decorated floats, costumes dancing and singing children, banners representing clubs and teams, all organized under a theme or themes that represented the pride they had in their school was just magnificent. It was very difficult for the judges to award only a few schools when there were so many beautiful displays. There were some schools that went above and beyond and we want to recognize them. As the school's names announced, will the principal of that school please come forward to accept the Excellence Parade Award on behalf of your school? The Keys to Excellence Award, awarded to the school that best exemplifies the district's mission, vision, core beliefs and commitments, and pledge of ethics. We have two winners. Terrance C. Riley, School Number 7, and Victor Radlack, School Number 21, and William F. Hallerin, School Number 22, and 31. Honorable mention, Elmore School Number 12, and Elizabeth High School. The League Spirit Award is awarded
The League Spirit Award is awarded to the school that best exemplifies the spirit of their school. We have two winners. Dr. Orlando Herrera, Academy School Number 26, and Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy. Honorable Mention, Donovan Stewart, Early Childhood Sector School Number 1, and Juan Pablo Duarte, Elsoria Martí School Number 14. The Imagineer Award, awarded to the school that demonstrates the most creativity in their design. We have two winners. Benjamin Franklin, School Number 13, and Dr. Albert Einstein, Academy School Number 29. Okay, correction on the Imagineer Award. The winners are Robert Flores, School Number 18, and Dr. Albert Einstein, Academy School Number 29. Honorable Mention, Abraham Lincoln, School Number 14, Ronald Reagan Academy, School Number 30, and the Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy. Let's have another round of applause for our All-Honor Awardees and team.
Thank you. We're now gonna watch a video of the parade. You can all maybe see it. The staff and his team that worked so hard on this parade. And to all of you, the principals, the teachers, the staff, the support staff, everyone, the students, the parents, everyone. This was a celebration of our children and all of their hard work and their efforts. All that they have done throughout the school year. This was all about them and for them and for nothing else. I want to congratulate all of them and thank you again for your participation. We look forward to being bigger next year. Thank you so much. At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. I shout all individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comments shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No older or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during the single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. Our first speaker tonight will be Donna Obi. Once again, Donna, thank you for being here. Donna Obi is the President of the Roseville Board of Education. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. What an incredible school spirit here. My gosh, you guys are great. You're incredible. The one thing you came to do is fantastic. I mean, to have them supported in this way and encouraged to do everything with their best effort, and you celebrate them, their parents. This is just not possible without full participation of the community. And you are a true inspiration to this district. You know, District 20 is so proud of Elizabeth Schools. You're number one, not by mistake. You're number one by doing hard work, being diligent, supporting each other, and really surrounding our kids here in this district with your best efforts. And it shows. The parade was incredible. Thank you so much, Elizabeth School Board, for inviting me tonight. The parade was a total expression of school pride. The kids were involved, and you could tell in every aspect of everything that was shown during the parade. They were encouraged, they were celebrating, and they were together. The unity that they depended upon to bring those performances together, just, I tell you, it just made the entire day. It was a beautiful day in every way. I wanted to be sure to come here tonight and make sure you understood how much your communities, your surrounding communities, not only are proud of you, but exemplify the things that you have done because you've been so very successful in giving us the type of performance and the type of achievements that we all will aspire to. So thank you so much for parents, administrators, and for the school board for really showing up and showing the entire state how it's done and how it's done right. You are incredible. I just wanted to remind everyone that your participation in every aspect of our community is very important. This year, there's a very special event going on. It is an important opportunity for everyone in this district. I have decided, along with some longstanding residents, to stand up for leadership this year in the primaries. I will be running for state senate. I will be running on a ticket along with your community leaders of very strong residents, longtime residents, lifelong residents in some respects. And they have all had their turn of taking leadership in the community around this district. They are committed to you. They're committed to the excellence that you have shown and also supporting your continued efforts to ensure that we do have a generation that is ready for college, work, and life. You have brought us to a place that we know that we can continue to move forward onto higher education, to move forward to quality within our homes, our lives, our neighborhoods. And in your sense of respect, it's truly, it is a privilege to serve you. So thank you very much tonight. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you so much, Donna. Thank you for being here tonight. Good luck to you. Good luck for it. I know you're up against some incredible odds, but I know you're gonna do great. I know you're running for senate against a longtime foe here of the Elizabeth Board of Education. Someone who's not a friend and has never been a friend of the Elizabeth Board of Education, and I'm not ashamed to admit it. Senator Ray Lesniak has never, ever, I think, stepped foot in one of these schools or supported the work and efforts here of all of our staff and administration. He spent the entire week or two criticizing the parade and really trying to strip away the spirit of what the children do here in the district. And it was shameful. But you know what, Donna? Good luck to you. Maybe more citizens like you to step up and speak out and be heard. Thank you so much. Good luck to you. Good luck for it.
Thank you so much. We support and encourage you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Maria Medelos.
Good evening. I haven't been here for a while. But you know, after the circumstances of hearing, you know, you're appointing Denosso and your two representatives getting locked up for, you know, corruption as always, it's shameful because, you know, we have a one that was appointed on the board, we have a Denosso that was appointed on the board, and Aristote, the voter who was appointed on the board. It's a shame that yous are up here talking about, you know, the integrity that the Board of Education, but yous are the ones that are appointing these people, okay, that are doing corruption to our children, stealing lunch. You know, that's the shameful part. And then yous all stand here talking about Lesniak, even though I don't like the gentleman, but still, you know, look at what yous pick out. These are the people that yous want to represent our children, okay? I have my grandson here. I born him. Because see, this is where I have to take him out of this district because I want him to get a good education. I don't want him to be represented by thieves that have to steal from our children. And it's shameful because not all of yous are. But these are the ones that yous are appointing up there, that yous are parading. You know, it should be a discuss. Yous have all these banners up here and everything. You understand? We know who yous are. So does the Star Ledger. And you know, keep your comments to yourselves because I don't interrupt anybody around here. So give me the same respect. You know, it's called freedom of speech, and I do have that right. So all I'm saying is, like I said, it starts from you guys. But yous are the ones that are appointing these people that are representing, you know, the stealing, the corrupt. Two lawyers. One you had hired outside to do an investigation. He did a cover-up. You paid $500,000 to Gary Stein. How much of a cover-up did he do? Because his report was all false. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medelos. Our next speaker is Mr. Julian Acebo.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? Julian Acebo. I live and reside here in the city of Elizabeth. Both my children here in the city of Elizabeth, kids, Elizabeth Public Schools. And I just wanna say that next year, I think the parade's gonna be bigger and better. It was great this year. We had a lot of fun. My kids were there. My daughter was very excited. I really, you know, I dressed up like the panda for the children. I was there on the flow. The kids at my school were there. They were very excited. Yes, I did dress up like the panda, but it was very fun, you know? That's what we do. We're teachers. This is what we'll do. We'll go the longest length for our kids, right? That's what, you know, that's what our kids need from us, role models. Not a panda model, but... But what I'm trying to say is, Elizabeth Board of Education is helping us realize that our community needs us. We're just not schools. We're also community service, we're community advocates, we're parents. I'm just not a teacher from eighth to grade. I'm a parent, I'm a cousin, I'm an uncle, I'm a grandfather at the school. Very happy to be part of Board of Education. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Acebo. And you know, all this time I thought it was Don Calvis that was the panda. We have to know that then. We have, our next speaker is Maria Echeverria.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, I have to put my daughter's whole entire file in order from 2007 up to 2012 last year. And according to her IEP, she's getting extra help with social studies. But back in 2007, she was better in social studies than she was in science. And actually, in 2010, when she had a 504, she was getting extra help with science and social studies. I really don't believe she's getting all the help that she really needs. I don't know why they, these kids have to go to school at 7:30 in the morning. My daughter wakes up at 5:30 in the morning to get ready for school. She comes in at four o'clock, five o'clock if she has after-school. And by five, six o'clock, she's drained out, sleeping, you know? I think my daughter's brain can't take all of that extra early intervention, whatever after-school intervention, whatever all this intervention. I don't believe that it's really helping her, and I want to see if she can opt her out of it. I want to also actually see about opting my daughter out of her MJAS because I believe that it's a test that is pointless, to be honest. I don't think that this test is, it's not really, it's nothing that she's gonna be using when she's an adult. I think that somehow there has to be a different way of teaching besides teaching of what, just to pass the test. That's one. Two, my son, there's 200 kids with autism in Elizabeth, so I really think we should have more for autism in Elizabeth. I know 128 are in this district, but the other kids are sent out. So I really think that we should look into more with that and actually more with Orton-Gillingham instead of the Sunday because I believe Orton-Gillingham is not a knockoff of the Sunday. The Sunday is basically a knockoff of the Orton-Gillingham, and that's what my kids really need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Echeverria. Our next speaker is Juliano Farina.
Good evening. I'm a school teacher at School 3, and I just want to congratulate you all for a fine job at the Excellence Parade. And I also, in the perspective of a teacher, I would like to say how you guys really, we all come together as a community, and we are truly strong. And I'm just proud to call myself an educator for this city. And all this week, my kids had the New Jersey ASI state exam, and all they were talking about was how great the parade was, and how they were just excited, and they just can't wait for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Farina. And our last speaker that signed up to speak tonight is James Montesier.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is James Montesier. I'm advisor to School 66. First and foremost, I would like to thank Mr. Munoz and the board for their leadership and for facilitating the organization of the parade. Besides the occasion to celebrate our work and achievement, students at School Number 66 had a great opportunity to take a literature role in ways in which it partook as a school. Our parade committee consisted of students who mistakenly exerted energy to arrange the different parts needed for the parade. Our students motivated their peers, collected permission slips. They created schedules for our band practices for their participation in the festivities. They created advent posters, crafted up different chairs, coached our line mascot, which was a sensation along the parade path as well as coordinated the logistic of everything needed to be transported to a starting point. Students came from the parade energized and invigorated to continue their climb to excellence. On behalf of the staff and students, I would like to thank Mr. Calvis and his team who worked tirelessly making this Excellence Parade a great success.
Thank you, Mr. Montesier. At this time, I close the public comment portion of the meeting. Would any of my fellow colleagues like to make any comments? Ms. Stappus.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to recognize-
First, I want to recognize Councilwoman First Ward Carlos Torres who's been here, thank you. So, second, I just want to respond to Ms. Maria. I understand it's unfortunate that, you know, these things happening to the board members, but I just want to know that it's not all of the board members and they shouldn't be all piled up into one. So there are still some, you know, board members who are here who actively work for the community. So, we are, I am a little disappointed that, you know, we leave other board, or other past board members in a bad aura for the rest of the board members here, so it was not all of us. But thank you for your comments. To Ms. Margie, is she still there? Margie, excuse me. Okay. I just wanna thank James Montesier, Vice President from School Six, as well as Lilness Genius, the Vice President of the Prior, for helping put the performances together for the students at School Number Twenty-three as well as School Number Six. And working with myself and Donna to make tonight's event work to a success. And lastly, I just want to say that good things do happen and come from Elizabeth. And I wanna congratulate former students who attended Elizabeth Public School who have made their communities proud. Cassian Green, who was chosen from the fourth round draft pick, number one seventeen, to the Chicago Bears, as well as Raining Rand. I just wanna say, to Texas, I just wanna say that we are proud of them and we know that they will do good work and make them Elizabeth, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Brer.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for being here tonight, first off. All members from the city and parents, staff. I'm just ecstatic, I guess, from coming off of the parade last week. It was such a great event. I still hear everyone that I walk into, run into, either from the public or students, teachers. They're all just so happy about what they saw and what they were able to experience, what the kids were able to experience as part of the parade. So, I'm just very happy. I wanna just thank Donna again and his staff for a great job putting it together. The schools, it's just, I think it's, to look at it in perspective, I just, I'm happy to see something that I didn't see before, which is the schools and the kids getting some sort of sense of identity. And the kids start to get behind either their mascot or just feel like they're part of a family and not just a building where they go and learn day-to-day, which is essentially what they go for. But it's great when they have that sense of pride in the place that they spend most of their day. So, I'm just ecstatic, I hope it keeps growing and just hope to see better things happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brer. Helen, Mr. Zolz.
Again, this is in regards to the parade. I've been in this board for eight years and I'm extremely proud of our children, of our staff, everybody who makes up the Elizabeth Board of Education family. As I was thrown into the parade on Sunday, I had seen those kids with that pride, you know? These kids sometimes are not, they don't have any support on that, they can cheer for them. So, the pride that I felt with the children, it was incredible, the energy. Despite everybody's negativity or something, I decided I'm not gonna allow any of this stuff to change my happiness and my pride with children and the staff that have put this together. So I congratulate the whole school district for pulling together something for our children because that's what we're here for, for the children, not for any other stuff that sometimes, you know, they want us to believe that we're here for. So again, I'm extremely proud of our children, our staff that put this together. Donna, which I know that, again, he doesn't like to be recognized sometimes, but again, he pulled this whole thing together. I think he can probably do the whole parade next January, we're proud of it, with the organization. And I'm extremely proud to record this, we're extremely proud of our children, our staff, our Board of Education, which again, we fight, we're here because we want to serve the children of Elizabeth. And despite what everybody else says, you know, we are making it. So thank you again for supporting us, the parents that are here, the staff that is here. Again, we're proud and we're gonna continue fighting to make this the number one district in America. Thank you, Ms. Papas.
Thank you, Mr. Don, Mr. Papas. Mr. Zor.
I just would like to echo what my team members have said. For me, it's a privilege to sit here. I work in the school system and there's nothing more rewarding. So what we did today, what we have done with Elizabeth, the parade, the excellence of teachers. We have excellent teachers here, staff, administrators. We have a parade of wonderful people. We have parents that do cooperate. And you know, I just wanna say that regardless of anything, nothing is perfect in this life. Nothing is. But let me tell you, I take pride of sitting here. And whatever names we call it or whatever, we are doing it because the children deserve this. I haven't seen any other district moving forward like Elizabeth has done. So you know, if you just see the results, just look at the results, don't believe anything. Look at the numbers, look at the news, check the internet, Facebook, there's a lot of media out there. Do it and then come to me and tell me that it's not happening. We do a wonderful things in Elizabeth. Elizabeth has changed tremendously. I have lived in Elizabeth for more than thirty years. My children went to the school system in Elizabeth and I'm very proud of this system. So I just wouldn't, I wouldn't even consider moving at this point out of Elizabeth because this is home for me and I guess for all of you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I wanna thank all my, I wanna thank all my colleagues. And on behalf of, I guess, myself and I'll speak for myself and not the board at this moment. You know, last week here at the Elizabeth Board of Education, we probably shared some highs and certainly some lows. And I guess that's just life in general. There's those moments, we have good days and we have bad days. The bad days don't last, but they certainly do hurt. But it can't take away the pride and the passion and the excitement that I saw at our parade on Sunday. It could never erase the smiles and the good feelings of the children and of the teachers and of all the staff members who worked so hard to make that possible. A lot of people forget this and that's because most people, I guess, that just wanna focus on the negative, don't realize that positive energy propels you forward. And as long as you stay positive and focused, the superintendent here speaks about the three L's. Love, laser-like focus on learning and leadership. Leadership. I'm so proud of my colleagues up here because each one of them are volunteers. They work for this office, they don't get a dime, they don't get paid. Lot of hours, probably leave here tonight at two o'clock in the morning. We have a number of committee meetings throughout the month. Numerous phone calls, calls from the parents, but there's love and there's leadership and there's dedication up here on this board. And I can't thank them enough as much as I can thank each and every one of the staff members, the students, as well as the parents that come here tonight. They give up their time to be here tonight. You know, we get criticized, believe it or not. We get criticized for having these performances. We get criticized for recognizing our young scholars. We get criticized for recognizing our staff. And we get attacked because people don't like that we do that. I can't understand that. I don't think we can, we can recognize enough our students. I only grew up just a few blocks from here and I can tell you the negativity I heard as a kid. We're not supposed to fake it, we're not supposed to be successful if we come from Elizabeth schools. We come from tough neighborhoods. No one better than I knows that. My father was shot in an armed robbery. I was mugged many times. I grew up in tough neighborhoods, but my mother never, ever, ever let us give up. She told us how important education was and she told us to always, always to keep striving. But the single most important thing that my mother shared with me that I'll share with every one of you and every child that I ever come across is, when I finally got my college degree from Rutgers, which I'm so proud of. And when I came home, I got my first job and I bought my first suit. I bought my first briefcase and I came home and I thought I was on top of the world because I thought I made it. I said, "Look mom, I'm important now." And my mother said, "It's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice." And that's the message that I've always took with me throughout my life and through my public service. We're not perfect, far from it. We're not a perfect vision, far from it. But we strive every day like every one of you, administrators and teachers, who strive and work every day to make it work, to make it better. And we look forward, not backwards. And others, they're gonna try to throw the arrows and take some shots. But we can't, we can't not be sidetracked by those people. We have to continue our focus and strive to be number one. And there'll be bumps along the road, we'll make our mistakes. None of us are perfect. This is the school, the fourth largest school district in the state. And in a short number of years, remarkable years, we have turned this district around. And we're not done. And the reason we're here today is because we're not gonna leave any school behind. No school is gonna be left behind. We value the education of every child. I grew up just down the street and I couldn't be prouder of every single one of these board members and the staff members and particularly the students for all that they have done in achieving so much in just a short few years. Again, I wanna thank you for taking time out and coming out and hearing us. And thank you for being a part of this family, thank you. We're now gonna take a five-minute recess. I wanna thank everyone for coming out, those that wanna stay, then we're gonna go into the board agenda, which will be probably lengthy. But I wanna thank you again from the bottom of our heart for being out here today, thank you.